Testing, testing. Lancaster County Planning Commission, February the 16th. Testing, testing.
I'll ask the Clerk to call a roll.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Matthew Jones.
Here.
Sheila Henson.
Here.
Ben Levine.
Here.
Thank you. And I would like to make a note on the agenda, excuse me, in the record, that a quorum of Lancaster County Planning Commission is in the meeting today. And the meeting has been posted to required length of time in the lobby of the County Administration Building and on the county website, that the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. Welcome each of you to your Planning Commission meeting. And we have several people here that I'd like to recognize. As I look around the room, I see Sheriff Fale. Thank you for being here, sir. His Major, Major Shaw. Councilman Billy Mosteller from District 3. Councilman Allen Blackland from District 6. Somewhere in this building is a gentleman named Steve Willis, who will be in shortly, who is the Administrator of Lancaster County. If I missed anybody, I apologize. Mr. John DeBeau is our county attorney as President. So good to see you, sir. I ask you, if you will, at this time, to take a moment to turn off or place on vibrate any phones, pagers, any noise-making device that you may have in your possession, so they do not disturb the meeting. And I would ask that you refrain from conversations among your fellow sitting near you. I know they're far apart this time. That way, we do not interrupt the meeting with anything. Thank each of you again for being here. Now comes time to approve the agenda. We have a couple of changes that are, have to be made. I'm going to remove my mask. I'm protected by everything, so that I can be heard for the record. The agenda, we have a couple of changes that need to be made on 5A, which is the UDO text amendment for landfill class 1. I need a motion to bring that from the table.
Let's turn around, move, remove it from the table.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? A second. Ms. Sandsbury, thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous, thinking. The next item is the Lansdowne Corporation, which is, has two separate sections. Both have been requested to be tabled until the March 16th by the applicant. Do I hear a motion?
Chairman, I move we table.
I second it.
This would be items 5B and C. Have a motion for Mr. Barnett. Second for Ms. Henson. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Now then, I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I second it.
Have a motion for Mr. Barnett. Second for Ms. Henson, the motion that the agenda be approved as amended. All in favor? It's unanimous, thinking. Now comes time for citizens' comments. We'll have that document in our hands in just a moment. And out of three sets of documents, no one is assigned to speak to this, so we will move forward. The next item is the approval of the minutes for the January 7, 2021 workshop and the January 19 regular meeting minutes. All in favor, or do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Did I already do that?
Have motion to approve.
Mr. Levine. And a second, Mr. Sandsbury. All in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. And it's for January 7, 2021, and January 19, 2021, are approved. Headed. The next item, UDO text amendment 2020-2957, outdoor shooting ranges and turkey shoots. Staff member. Robert.
All right. What, you said the turkey shoots one?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. It's UDO text amendment 2020-2578, landfill class 1. Apologize.
No problem at all. All right. As indicated, this is an application to amend UDO Section 2.5.3, use table, Section 5.9, industry wholesale storage uses, and 10.3 definitions, to create and allow for landfill class 1 composting facility in the heavy industrial district, as a special exception and provide for specific standards. We'll go through this. The Section 253 in the use table, as I indicated, that just will create the use in the heavy industrial district. It will require approval of a special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Section 5.9 of this amendment creates standards that are based upon the existing landfill class 2 standards that are already within the UDO. Includes standards for minimum lot area, separation requirements, setbacks, screening, vehicular access, and hours of operation. There are no standards included for noise. Section 10.3 of the amendments will provide for a definition that is consistent, that is already provided by the state, for the landfill class 1 use type. Just wanted a quick look here. Like I said, this is for the HI zoning district only is where this is affecting. This is just a quick glance, if you will, of the entirety of Lancaster County, trying to identify where all the properties are. There's only 54 of them, all total, in the county that are zoned heavy industrial. Some of them are not even buildable. There's one that I noticed in here, I can't remember where it is in the county, that is literally a median in a drive-al. So there's only 54 parcels this would affect as of right now. Majority of them are kind of up in the northwest, if you will. There are a few even all the way down in the southeast and in the county. Nothing really up in the Indian land area at all. And this kind of shows where you can see all the Indian land area and down to the town of Van Wyk. Where you kind of focus in here is, this is where the property is that is owned by the applicant of this ordinance, just again, for some reference there. I wanted to touch on noise real quickly. As I indicated before, there is no aspect of the proposed amendment that touches up noise. I understand there are some concerns related to that or the lack thereof in the code or the proposed amendment, I should say. Just as a point of reference, there are code of ordinances for the county. It does establish the standards for excessive noise. That attaches only to those areas in the unincorporated areas of the county, so it would not attach to anything that is incorporated areas, city of Lancaster, town of Heat Springs, Kershaw, Van Wyk. Those would all essentially be on their own to whatever ordinances those individual towns or city would have. While the proposed amendment doesn't include any provision specifically addressing noise, the board, if they so choose, may want to consider recommending language on noise relative to adjacent residential or institutional properties, perhaps some sort of distance and decibel level established. I would note that the text amendment as proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan as required by UDO Section 9.2.15.3, as well as SC Code Title 6. Staff is recommending the approval of the proposed text amendment. Bill, if you have any questions.
Questions for Sam. Does the applicant have anything to offer? If he would come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you prefer that we, did I keep my mask on or off?
Fine.
You don't care?
As long as you're not too close together.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can hear you better on the record.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vincent Shaheen from Camden, South Carolina. I'm joined by my partner, Michael Wright, both at 1111 Church Street in Camden. And our client, Stacy Fale, who is, lives in Lancaster County, and I'm sorry, I don't know his address, but I'll make him note it, in the Black Creek area, who is, works for S&amp;M Smith &amp; Sons, who actually runs the operation that we're discussing today. Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, because your staff and your lawyer have worked extremely hard with us to try to model this based on your existing, your existing ordinances and the uniform, or the national uniform development ordinances. This operation received its appropriate permits from DHEC, because it's a molting operation. They have requirements and standards that have to meet. They received that, or that permit from DHEC, but Lancaster County, in your code, did not have the appropriate allowance for that, so it was considered a traditional landfill, which it's not. It actually keeps items outside of the landfill by molting them and then they're reused. And so what we did, working with your staff, was come up based on your existing ordinances with a language that allows the molting operation, that state law allows through DHEC permitting on the sites that your staff mentioned earlier. It's really pretty simple. I understand from listening to the staff, that there's some concerns about noise. We don't have any issues with abiding by any of the current existing noise ordinances, and if any towns adopt noise ordinances, then they will abide by those noise ordinances as well. It's pretty simple, so I don't have a big presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you do have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And if the, any of the rest of you get anything you would like to say while you're up.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Excuse me, just one minute. Ms. Sandsbury.
Hey, yes, I have one question. In the first paragraph under definitions, such a facility shall consist of a grinding or some person? What, what is some person for you all? I understand the body, but I don't understand.
Beg your one moment to make sure I tell you correctly, okay? Thank you, Commissioner, and I apologize, but I want to give you correct information. That, so you understand what the grinding of it is? And then they actually mix the wood particles that come from the grinding in with sand or nuance or other particulate that they then bag and sell and ship.
But it stays there for a while?
Uh, I mean, it stays there until it moves off the site, but it doesn't stay there for months on end, if that's what you're asking me. Is that what you mean?
No, I just.
Not for a prolonged period of time.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and the object is not to store it there.
Gotcha.
It's to move it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could pose a question to staff or the commission. When we looked at it last time, the hours of operation were, I'm unclear as to what the hour operations in the current proposal are, honestly.
Way it's written, in Exhibit C 5.9.16, landfill class 1 composting facility, heavy industrial, item I, hours of operation, class 1 composting facilities may only operate between the hours 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. However, any grinding operations shall not occur after 5:00 p.m. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, it does. And I would, we will abide by whatever you guys decide, obviously, on that issue. I would say that the grinding does, in the summer months, it does sometimes go past 5:00 o'clock. It would not go past that in the winter months, because they don't operate it at night. But I would ask that you consider allowing it in a seasonal basis until 7:00 o'clock, since it stays light until 9:00 o'clock in the, in the summer months. So I would ask you to consider that it be allowed to grind until 7:00 p.m. in the months between May and August, that short window of time, just as an accommodation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. No one is assigned to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. As soon as you have before you. Let me find it again. Got my papers all tangled up. Want to quote it right. UDO text amendment TA 0202578. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Have a motion to approve, Ms. Sandsbury.
I will second.
Second for Mr. Levine. Discussion? Hearing none, we have a roll. Excuse me.
Sorry. I'd just like to make a suggestion, that, a recommendation, that county council explore and include a provision in the ordinance that specifically addresses the noise issue.
Is this in the city limits of town, of the town of Van Wyk?
It is.
They would have to make that ordinance, wouldn't they?
They would, they do. And there is a noise order in Van Wyk, but this is for the entire, for all of the landfills.
We do have a noise ordinance in place in the county now. So we could ask council to, I guess, to explore that further. If you would do that, Mr. Barnes.
I think that's part of the, that's part of the recommendation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything further? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to ask so many questions, but it is in my district. Who will oversee this operation, the one that's in Van Wyk? Will it be DHEC or will it be the zoning commission?
DHEC typically operates the, overlooks the operation with their permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes.
The item for you is text amendment, as I referenced, county line. The business operations will have to come in and submit permits to daily operate. And as it's written in the proposed ordinance, a special exception permit would be needed. For any facilities located in a municipality that falls under an RDU, the state of Van Wyk, they would have to apply to, the special exception permit would be reviewed by the county of Van Wyk, VZA, if they have a board or a VZA.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If you have a roll, call it, please.
Rosa Sandberg.
Or.
Mika Neely.
Or.
Charles Dean.
Or.
James Barnett.
Or.
Matthew Jones.
For.
Sheila Henson.
For.
Ben Levine.
For.
Motion to approve UDO text amendment 202578, passed by a vote of 7 to 0. The next item is UDO text amendment 2020-2957, outdoor shooting ranges and turkey shoots.
Mr. Tell. All right. Going this there. Let me give a quick overview with regard to this item, as it's generated a bit of interest. Wanted to cover first why this amendment is being proposed. This one is initiated by Lancaster County. The events, an event center constructed of what was an unpermitted shotgun shooting facility. There were some neighbor complaints, which resulted in an investigation by county code enforcement staff. Ultimately, staff was asked to develop options to address versus closing the facility. A text amendment was identified as the best means to do so, and would help to create an opportunity for facility to come into compliance. Secondarily, the amendment is being proposed to help correct turkey shoot standards that were omitted from the new 2016 UDO update when that was done. Presently, there are no standards whatsoever for that use. What does this amendment do? Well, first off, it's going to amend the existing regulations concerning outdoor commercial ranges. Will expand the zoning districts where outdoor ranges may be allowed. It is going to reduce the standards for archery ranges. It's also going to allow for turkey shoots, once again, in Lancaster County. What does the amendment not do? It does not stop recreational shooting in Lancaster County. It does not impact private shooting or hunting on your own property. Now, why are there some concerns with this? Conversations that we've had with public, as well as sheriff's office, would have indicated us that there are concerns with the existing ordinance language, not necessarily that which is being proposed, but that which is already in the code today. Certainly, anyone that would have concerns with that existing language can certainly propose a subsequent text amendment to address those items, which are not covered by this amendment. And the outdoor shooting ranges, these are classified by Chapter 2 of the UDO as use category D, which is a commercial entertainment type of use. That's where you'll find outdoor shooting ranges. When you look at the chart there, permitted uses, it's a commercial entertainment type use. It's not residential, it's not an educational or institutional use, it is commercial entertainment. It's regulated by Chapter 5, in a sense that it says, "This use includes the shooting of firearms, bows, and crossbows at or in conjunction with both for-profit and nonprofit facilities. It does not include incidental target practice by individuals on private property." That is the language presently in Chapter 5 regarding that for shooting range. And it's also defined back in Chapter 10 as permanently located and approved area that is designed and operated for the use of rifles, shotguns, pistols, silhouettes, skeet, trap, black powder, air guns, archery, or other similar, sorry, similar sport shooting in an outdoor environment. Now, as we get into the, the meat, if you will, of the ordinance itself, Section 2.5.3 is our use table. Currently, outdoor shooting ranges are allowed in the AR, light, agricultural residential, light industrial, and heavy industrial districts. We were proposing that they would be allowed, continue to be allowed in the AR district, but now expanded to rural residential, rural neighborhood, and the open space preservation districts. The light industrial and heavy industrial districts would be removed as permissible districts for this use. Reason for that is, we read the definition for those districts, this is a use that's inconsistent with what those used districts should be for, really, they should never have been included in there to begin with. The use would require the approval of a special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is how it is already constructed in the UDO, so nothing is changing there. We're just, obviously, we are both allowing it in these new districts, expanding it the same way as we have it in the AR district present. Section 5.5.12, these are the regulations concerning the outdoor shooting range. In the AR and the OSR districts, it will be allowed for any firearms, bows, and crossbows as a principal use. In the RR districts, it is only shotguns and bows and crossbows are allowable as a principal use. Again, still presumed to that special exception permit. In the RN district, shotguns, bows, and crossbows will be allowed to be used in outdoor range, so long as that range is accessory to an event venue or bank or hall principal use. It's kind of being geared in that way, sort of a tiered effect, if you will, as properties transition from being kind of the most rural, as we could have them in the county, to slightly becoming less and less rural, as it goes from AR to RR to RN, as it gets a little bit more constrained as to what potentially can occur. Still opening it up to, I believe, thousands of additional properties potentially, to some degree or another in the county, but with a little bit more constraint, if you will, as it goes up. Still certainly more than it would be in LI or HI. And as far as the AR district goes, there's no change. The ordinance would establish an enhanced setback, submittal and expiration requirements would enhance our existing noise mitigation rules, shot containment, hours of operation, and security provisions, and would simplify the existing design provisions as well. Regarding to the turkey shoots, Section 5.12.3, this is the section essentially that establishes what the temporary uses are, where they can be done, and what their durations or time frequencies are. As it sits right now, we are proposing turkey shoots as a temporary use for three days with one month intervals. Basically, you go for three days, then take a month off, and you can do it for another three days, as far as it goes on that property. The AR, the RN, the RR, and the OSP districts are the uses that are, sort of the districts that would be allowable for turkey shoots consistent with those that are allowed for outdoor ranges. Section 5.12.4 sets forth the specific requirements for each and every temporary use in the county. We would establish specific provisions for turkey shoots, not within a half mile of a residential, educational, institutional, or place of assembly. If you need to be fenced, posted, or otherwise restricted, do control access and ensure safety. Oriented away from inhabited areas, parking be provided, hours of operation will be from sunrise to sunset, and a notice will be need to be mailed to adjacent property owners 30 days in advance of that temporary use, just to, I have them notice of what is occurring. These provisions generally have been adapted from the pre-2016 UDO. One of the major differences of note is that the pre-2016 UDO actually required them to not be within one mile of a residential church, school, or daycare use. This would only restrict that to a half mile, so that's a fairly large change. That actually was the same restriction for outdoor shooting ranges. They had to be an hour, sorry, a mile away from any residential church, school, or daycare as well. One alternative that has been considered for turkey shooting is not a specific set of ordinance language, or text amendment language that has been drawn up to this point for turkey shoots, is that we could look at allowing them for any duration of time without any interval between, and allowing them potentially in any zoning district. And also generally just creating the specific requirements to just pointing out to, or directing it to be in the state statute regulations as a concern to shooting as well. That's one alternative that's been thought of, that you can certainly take into consideration should you choose to do so. The text amendment as proposed has been found Uh, the text amendment, a- as proposed, has been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plans required by our U D O, as well as South Theronico Title Six. I would note that the Infrastructure Regulation Committee for the county, uh, did review this ordinance back at their meeting December fifteenth last year, and they did recommend it to move forward to Planning Commission, as I do with you today. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the proposed text amendment. If you have any questions.
If you would take just a moment of your time and explain, I'm sure that there may be some of the people out here that don't understand what these two-letter initials that we use are.
Of zoning districts?
Yes, if you would, just explain that.
Back up a second. Make sure I'm refreshing there. The A R district is our agricultural residential zoning districts, L I was light industrial, H I is the heavy industrial district, uh, R R is rural residential, R N is rural neighborhood, and O S P is open space preservation district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure that we have citizens come in that don't necessarily understand our language. Please cut the phone off. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Levine.
Um, I just want to say, thank you, Robert, for explaining all that, that there was a lot of information, both on social networks and in emails and calls this last week, uh, you know, with regards to what this amendment is about and what it includes. The detailed breakdown there was, was very helpful and very specific in understanding this. I've read the text of the amendment, you know, multiple times to try to get the same understanding of what you just shown up there, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Sandsbury.
Um, in the old U D O, it mentions, uh, about a natural earth embankment, a minimum of ten feet in height. Are we, we having that, or is that something that was deleted?
Oh, this is for the, the turkey shoot? That where that was from?
Pistol rifle skeet range.
About the old, so yeah. Um, yeah, that's, that would appear to be an item that was not brought over. Double checking myself in the ordinance here or the amendment, so, yeah, that may have been an item that was not brought over, um, can't say as I recall an exact reason as to why.
What may be shooting into then?
Hopefully, the targets. That's, sorry. Um, yeah, um, yeah, there, there probably should be that language, that should probably be, be brought back in, and that was probably an oversight, and having that excluded from what be brought back in.
Thank you. If I'm shooting, I'm gonna miss the target, so you need to think about that.
And we should, we should definitely have the embankment.
One thing I noted in, it's perhaps, um, I don't know if this might work. All right, I'll just speak up. Um, one thing I noted in here, and it might be just contained within this section, Ms. Sandsbury, but, um, the shot containment, um, section does make reference to, um, containment measures, um, as set forth in the range source book published by the N R A. Um, so, pure speculation perhaps, it's just, rather than have a specific ten-foot berm, if those standards change through time, making reference to an actual publication, make sure that your, uh, regulations and your statutes remain current with, um, term technologies.
Thank you.
I think that a lot of the confusion has been with the fact that citizens feel like they're not gonna be able to go out behind their pond down, which might be forty-foot high, and shoot your gun on their own property. And we feel that that's not a part of what you're looking at. Explain, please.
Chairman.
Yes?
A lot of people are having a hard time hearing, can we up the volume any? A lot of people are trying to hear, but obviously can't hear.
Three different screens up here, so.
All right.
That's to eleven hundred, whatever.
I think that's probably gonna work. Thank you, Mr. Burns. All right.
Oh, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sandsbury.
Robert, did, uh, do you have a hearback from the sheriff and his opinion of this?
Yes, I, I did speak with him, I have occasion to speak with him, I believe he is going to speak later.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, we will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. Excuse me, sir. Pardon me?
I got a question, please.
Hold just a moment. At this time, we will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. As I call your name, please come forward, speak clearly into the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A member of the audience, uh, indicated he had signed up, uh, online using his comments, and for whatever reason, it didn't find its way to our desk, and his name's Charles, and I think he'd like to speak on this.
Charles who?
Charles Joyner.
Pardon me?
Charles Joyner.
Where was I? When I call your name, please come forward, speak clearly into the microphone, give your full name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to make your comments, make your comments to the Planning Commission as a whole, not to any one individual, and not to anyone in the audience. I'm timing you, boy.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I got some, uh, handouts, can I hand these to rocks to pass out?
Yes, sir.
Barry Phile, fifteen twenty, Paisland Highway, Sheriff, Lancaster County. Let, let me just start off by thanking you guys for what you do, for your service here in Lancaster County, but, but I do have some concerns about the proposed text amendments in the U D O concerning outdoor shooting ranges. The, the text amendment concerning outdoor shooting ranges indicates it applies to outdoor shooting ranges, but not incidental target practice by individuals on private property. The U D O defines an outdoor shooting range as a permanently located and approved area that is designed and operated for the use of rifles, shotguns, pistols, et cetera, or any other sport shooting in an outdoor environment. Many Lancaster County residents regularly shoot for target practice on private property. We encourage them to do so safely, and applaud them when they make improvements to their land, such as building berms to ensure fired bullets do not leave their property. However, I am concerned that improvements like this on private property could lead regulators to conclude these citizens are operating outdoor shooting ranges, subject to the requirements of the U D O. The effect of the outdoor shooting range provision of the U D O could be discouraged, could be used to discourage property owners from making improvements to their property to make it safe for anyone to shoot there. The availability of affordable outdoor shooting ranges in the county would provide alternative to backyard shooting enthusiasts, some of whom law enforcement and undoubtedly planning and zoning get frequent complaints about. However, the U D O required for outdoor shooting ranges make it unlikely anyone could afford to establish one. The setback requirements is particularly prohibitive, the U D O says, "The functional area of outdoor shooting ranges shall be located no closer than as described below, as measured to the property lines of the subject property. For firearm shooting, the setback is a half-mile. As I understand this, the shooting activity would, would have to occur at a location on the property that is at least a half-mile from the outer perimeter of the property. Therefore, a tract of between six and seven hundred acres would be required to establish an outdoor shooting range. This setback requirement, along with other proposed requirements concerning federal and N R A standards, likely will make construction of ranges here in Lancaster County cost prohibitive, and the backyard shooting and complaints related to it will continue." My request is that you guys just look at the U D O, the text amendment proposed, and do what you can to make the citizens of here in Lancaster County able to shoot on private property, and the regulations to a private range or backyard shooting isn't, uh, stopped on their behalf. Uh, I was gonna mention turkey shoots, uh, but, but again, it's the same as, as, as the, the range here, the setbacks are the same, it would absolutely, uh, uh, just destroy the, the nonprofits who depend on these turkey shoots for funding. Uh, you just could not have a turkey shoot here in Lancaster County, i- if we go by what, what is currently on the, uh, proposed amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Charles? I'll get your last name again, I wanted to make sure I had it right.
Charles Joyner.
Joyner.
Thirty-nine eighty-six, J B Denton Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you answered a lot of questions for me, uh, with your, uh, demonstrations. Uh, you've got nonprofits for turkey shoots, are they gonna have to pay a permit fee? If it's for profit, I would understand that, but a nonprofit, they gonna have to do it. Um, you've got paid dove hunts, is that gonna fall into the situation where it is a paid hunt, now, now it's a paid range? Um, you restrict the nonprofits three days, a lot of the fire departments, volunteers, goochies, places like that, they do a lot of turkey shoots, and they raise a lot of money, those are their buildings, they're not the county buildings, those are their buildings. The only thing in that building is the fire truck that runs the county, so that's how they raise the money to buy the stuff and to do improvements and things. Uh, Mr. Attorney, I can't pronounce your name good, but you mentioned the N R A range book, it also states in there specifically, "All information contained within this form is suggestive practices only, and no standard or stated or implied, failure to follow any suggestion in our, uh, N R A range source book, and no way implies the range as being operated negatively." Negative, is it? Need, or nothing contained within the N R A range source book shall be constructed as, or construed as standard for the evaluation of specific shooting facilities." That's a quotation out of that book, just so everybody knows. Uh, what are the normal hours of the noise ordinance in Lancaster County? I'm trying to go past, ain't got three minutes. Uh, most turkey shoots, they happen in the fall and winter, get start at six o'clock, most people go off six o'clock, they get there six, thirty, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, they fire one shot at a time, that's how a turkey shoot's done, it's one shot, somebody comes back, one shot again, that's how that's fired. But to limit it to, at dark, you're taking away people from, they've been able to do that, they do a lot of them on Fridays, people work till five o'clock, that means they've got an hour to get there, have a turkey shoot with everybody that's gonna be on the property. Um, you know, the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office and Lancaster Police Department uses the range, I have fired personally on that range, I've shot on that range, and I know where it's at, so are they gonna, what's gonna happen to their range? They're not gonna be able to operate that range if they fall into these categories. It's, it's well under that half-mile limit to any residential, uh, situation. You are, you are talking about removing or not allowing pistols in the R R and R N. Why not have pistols? Pistols are a short-range weapon, they are designed for short range, they're not designed to be shot hundred fifty, two hundred yards. They, a shotgun and a pistol have about, about the same effective range on most calibers, you've got some that can over and beyond that. Uh, in the proposal you've got on there, South Carolina Registered Engineer, an engineer costs a lot of money, I know that architectures and people look at houses, but if you build a barn, you don't have to have an engineer to do that, people build barns every day, they go through, the county enforcers, uh, go through and look, make sure it's done right, if there are gonna be berms and things built, why can't the county enforcers already do that, that you play, you already pay them? Why would you have to pay fifty, or, I mean, so much of this stuff's gonna cost five, six, uh, five, six thousand dollars? Uh, I would like a permanent definition for private property, pro, there's only two types of property in Lancaster County, that is private property and government property. So, if you say you can file on private property, that means any property that in Lancaster County is not owned by a government agency can't be fired upon, and I could take any of my buddies out there and have a shoot anytime I wanted to, if it is allowed. Now, specific wording said your own property in this paper, so we need to define that. I am an avid shooter, I shoot all the time, I've been trained by the Marine Corps, I've worked for the Sheriff's Office, I've also worked for Lancaster Police Department, I've trained in pistols, shotguns, rifles, tanks, um, I've, I've actually shot tanks at North Priory Mountains, so I know what a backstop is. So, you know, when it goes into the, the ballistics of items, it needs to, you need to really look at a lot of that stuff. Council, yeah, yeah, the committee has actually done a pretty good job of going back and telling us what we didn't know. The problem was, we didn't know because of the wording. Words mean a lot to a lot of people, when it's in black and white, that's how they take it, there's no interpretation on it, it is one-hundred percent black and white. So, we do need to know exactly what that is, and I would like a definition handwritten somehow in the, in the thing that says shooting range outdoor. Hunt clubs, hunt club is a paid property, whether it's commercial-owned, private-owned, people pay to hunt there, if they have a range, which most of them do, if they have a range, that becomes a paid property that somebody is hunting on, now, they pay one time a year instead of every time they go, they not give a twenty dollars to hunt. So, you're taking away all the hunt, hunt club properties that they can actually have a range on, to sight the rifles in so they can hunt. Those are the items that are not addressed in this, that everyday people have come up, and we have discussed, trying to understand what is going on, that's why so many people here, so many people are upset about the things. Thank y'all so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. And that's all that is signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Does staff have anything further to offer?
If I could offer a few words?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, so, we've heard, uh, you know, we've, we've heard, uh, comments very similar to, to Mr. Joyner, and we've had conversations with the, the sheriff's office and, and others in the community about the concerns with the ordinance, and I just wanted to be very clear that, you know, the concerns may be, one, you know, absolutely valid and, and, and valuable, uh, but those concerns are about the existing language in the ordinance today. And so, if you're concerned about shooting ranges being, uh, that problem, you can sit to shooting range, that's the ordinance today, that's how that is, that's, that's a law today. If it's, um, you know, requirements about how the facility needs to be designed, shot containment, and, and performance within N R A standards, those are, those are provisions that are already in place today. The definition of an outdoor shooting range, that language is in this law today. What is changing is the county is allowing shooting range opportunities to expand within the county. Uh, we talked about the rural residential, rural neighborhood, R R, and the R N districts, those are not currently allowed to have shooting ranges, we are creating the ability to have shooting ranges in those areas. A second key aspect of this ordinance that's in place today is that archery ranges are treated the same as gun, if anyone's ever shot a bow versus a gun, they know that's almost like apples and oranges, and so we're, we're separating out archery ranges and treating and simplifying this much, you know, much more, because they're, they're different than firearms. So, and then we're also, again, turkey, while turkey shoots may be, uh, conducted throughout the county, and they, they are, based on the information that's been shared, right now, the ordinance today does not allow turkey shoots to, to operate, so what we're trying to do is fix that, like restoring some old language that's in place for decades, and put it back in the field. If we don't have that language right, we're happy to tweak it, or get, get feedback and, and do so, but I just want to stress, I, if there are, the most, nearly all the concerns that I've heard this evening, as well as earlier in the week, are about concerns about the laws that are in place today, and if folks wish to see change in those ordinances, I would highly recommend proposing a text amendment to, you know, modify them how you think they should be, and any citizen in Lancaster County can apply to change those regulations. Uh, I just want to make that information known, and so, uh, hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Levine?
I do have one question for staff, this, that was raised, and I, I think it definitely is something that needs some addressing, is, you know, the discussion was made about existing ranges, existing properties, um, that have ranges on them. Would the changing of the wording that we're making to the existing ordinance, would that affect existing ranges, would they have to come up to some sort of standard, or do those all, uh, stay grandfathered as they are?
They would continue to remain grandfathered in, they would not have to come up to these standards.
What if they?
Unless they're proposing to overhaul their range and take it all down and build it back in a different way.
This is, yeah, and that's-
And they keep operating as they are operating? That's fine. There's no problem. They don't have to worry about any coming into compliance with any of these requirements.
That's the concern I had was the, was that you have certain ones that would be considered grandfathered, yet, you know, they're gonna have to kind of maybe walk on eggshells a little bit if they need to redo something. They certainly couldn't expand it, I guess, you know, or else they would have to.
Yeah, if they're looking at expansions, that's changing some things around. But if they're doing repair, maintenance, I think anything of that nature, I don't believe that would trigger anything as far as compliance with this ordinance.
Okay. Was that, Mr. Boes?
Yeah, the standards.
I just, one note on the comment on shooting on private property. Perhaps I've read past a reference to one's own property within this ordinance, but under five point five twelve, I think the reference, the exclusionary reference is it does not include incidental target practice by individuals on private property, period. Not one's own private property. I just wanted to note that since that was a concern addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Let me ask my next question.
Let's get a motion and bring it to the floor and continue the discussion.
That's a good idea.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve for Ms. Henson.
In the interest of discussion, I'll make a second.
I have a second for Mr. Levine. Now, if we have a discussion.
What I was gonna say, to Mr. DeBose.
Ms. Henson.
Thank you. What you were saying about the, what you're saying is that that's the way it is now. What you were just, um, gosh, I lost the train of thought. You just said you're not supposed to interrupt me. I lost it.
Sir.
Say that again. What you, just say what you just said.
That, I think what you're asking, and I believe you are correct, is that that is existing text within the current U D O. The verbiage on applicability of shooting range outdoor, of course, this proposal expands the use categories that it can occur in, but that final sentence of the existing verbiage says it does not include incidental target practice by individuals on private property. Of course, you still have to abide by the underlying state code about safely discharging firearms, but I mean, that's state law. But the existing law seems to carve out incidental target practice by individuals on private property, and, you know, it's, that could conceivably include some of the other concerns addressed. I mean, I don't wanna speak for zoning enforcement, but if you were just sighting in a rifle and it is just an occasional use of a range in connection with a hunting facility, is that incidental target practice on private property? Conceivably it is, if you're not shooting dozens and dozens of rounds if you're sighting in a rifle. It's incidental to what you were doing.
Well, the planning, I mean, the staff, the planning staff, that needs to be made a lot, lot clearer, in my opinion. Okay, let me put it this way. I've got, I've got a hundred acres of land, and that's private property, and I wanna go out there and I wanna shoot. I wanna set up a target and I wanna shoot. Now, does that mean that I can't because it's on, that's private property? That's my property. Now, can I go out there and do that or not?
Yeah, I mean, the-
I can do that.
The existing law and this proposed statement says it does not include incidental target practice by individuals.
Okay, okay. So I can do that.
Sure.
With that, I'm happy. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Levine.
I think the major problem here is, first of all, we heard about this, most of us, and we got our information about this a long time before the public got a chance to digest this information and to read through it. And what's happened here is we have opened the book to take a look at our existing ordinances, and that's the part that people don't like. We're not making necessarily changes to those, and what's happened is we have existing ordinances that now that the magnifying glass is on them, you know, for developing new ranges, that's the part that people have an exception with. I don't see necessarily from my interpretation and reading the new areas where the ranges could be made used, and the information that's now in there for turkey shoots to bring turkey shoots into, into the correct usage with the ordinance. I don't see necessarily from my interpretation how that's going to impact it, but I also think that, you know, there's a lot of people from the community who have taken a look at things and kind of said, hey, wait a minute, what is this gonna do? And we've really kind of confused things. This new ordinance, I don't think adds anything new, but at the same time, with the information and what the public needs to know about this, I don't know that we're necessarily prepared tonight to be able to make a vote on this without, you know, and I think, I think that ideally, and this may, this may take, you know, removing the motion to approve and maybe making a motion to table this till next month, just so we can get a nice clear, give people a little bit more time for some public input as to how we can clearly identify, you know, especially what is existing, what is new, determine that, okay, maybe we're not making major changes to things, but make it, have that discussion with people a little bit more so that we can have this understanding that, yes, we're not going to be taking anything away. We're not gonna make anything cost prohibitive or more expensive or, you know, make it so it's almost impossible to have a new range if you wanna have a new range. I don't know that we're ready to address the existing ordinance, but maybe this needs to be part of a larger discussion.
Chairman.
It's Mike Barnett.
One of my favorite quotes from a favorite movie is, "What we have here is a failure to communicate." Obviously, the changes are for the benefit, but it appears that everybody thinks that it's taking away everything. As was mentioned earlier, that all these things are basically in the law right now, but it's a matter of updating them. We have our two counties, northern and southern Lancaster County. There's a whole lot of difference in shooting in the northern part of this county because it's wall-to-wall people. We're, Aaron, I agree with Mr. Levine. For your behalf, being the public, I think we need to let this stay on the table a little bit longer and get some true input, because what I'm reading from the crowd is everybody's confused. It's a failure to communicate.
Okay, I've got one question for Mr. Tep, and he may be able to answer this, but the statement was made that all existing firing ranges would be grandfathered.
Correct. Regulations aren't really changing for it, but, yeah.
Does anybody have an idea who and where and how many of those things we've got in the county now?
We have a clear idea.
Nobody does, and if I come in tomorrow after I've spent a weekend building one, say, I've had this one for a long time, you know, it's grandfathered, but it's, as you said, there has not been enough discussion for anybody to make a rational decision, and I have to agree with some of the confirmation that I've heard from the commissioners. So we have a motion on the table to approve and a second.
My question for Mr. Attorney, is the proper way to remove the motion and to make a motion to table it?
You would ask to withdraw your motion to approve. I will note, for what it's worth, commissioners, I will say this is before you because it deals with a specific ongoing use that was identified that was a violation. And part of the genesis in expanding these categories in which a shooting range can operate was to bring facilities into compliance, and just from a general policy perspective, to provide more opportunities for folks to establish outdoor ranges. That said, here y'all's complaints are concerns rather. So, yeah, your appropriate motion would be a motion to, you'd ask to withdraw your motion.
Yes. And I will, I will withdraw my motion.
He hasn't withdrawn his motion.
Well, he's got to go for it.
I second.
I hate the motion to approve has been withdrawn. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, and Mr. Attorney, just to make sure I make the proper one and other different motions for tabling or something. One, some have to be brought back within thirty days, some are-
Correct. So if you move to table a matter, it will die on the table unless taken off the table at the next meeting. It could be taken off the table and probably deferred again and tabled again, or you can make a motion to defer to some, you know, specific future date of a meeting.
So you're just saying if we don't make a motion, it doesn't necessarily die, it's not denied, it can come back at any time?
No, you would, if there's no motion to approve it, it would fail for lack of a motion or a second. So the real distinction is if a, if something has been tabled and it is not taken off the table at a later date, it will die from lack of action at that later date. If you have moved to defer it, it's just on the agenda, not on the table. It's actually up for consideration at that meeting it was deferred to. There doesn't have to be any action to take it off of the table. So if your, if your aim is just to push this to the next meeting, your motion might be a move that we defer this to our March, regular March meeting for consideration at that time with whatever info you want.
I would hope that this is something that we could have the discussion about and be able to address again within a month, so I would like to make a motion to defer this item till next month.
I have a second. I have a motion to defer until March sixteenth.
And I'll- I'll just notice a general principle too, that, I mean, this text amendment is this text amendment. Just like a rezoning, I would make a recommendation for approval or denial to council. I think mechanically, there could be other text amendments addressing other concerns that were voiced tonight, but this in its current state would be what would come out before y'all, for what that's worth, unless some new application or new text amendment is submitted.
I appreciate that. And I guess mine.
Sorry, and I guess my thinking for this is that I think what we need to determine in the next thirty days is that either, yes, okay, this is not restricting anything that's existing and everyone's okay with this, or we need to make some serious changes to what we wanna do. So my, my thought here is that we are deferring this so that we can determine if this is the right thing to do over the next thirty days, and if the input that we get from the public tells us that that's not necessarily the right thing, then I'm ready to, you know, deny this at a further meeting.
Mr. Boes, would it be proper for this to be discussed in the workshop, would it defer to the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, y'all can't take action at workshops. Y'all can receive information and ask questions and ask for additional information from staff. But again, can't, can't take official action on anything. So, yeah, I mean, y'all, y'all could discuss it at workshop.
Answering that question. Thank you. All right. I have a motion to defer with a second, to defer to March the sixteenth. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Rosa Sandsberry.
Approve.
Amika Neely.
For.
Charles D.
For.
James Barnett.
For.
Matthew Jones.
For.
Sheila Henson.
For.
Ben Levine.
For.
Motion to defer until March sixteen is passed by a vote of seven to zero. This will be on the agenda for the March sixteen meeting.
Can I say something before we adjourn, before we leave, or whatever we're fixing?
Not through yet. Go ahead.
Um, I want everybody to understand too, that our planning commission, I mean, our planning department, they, they were, they did a great job on this. They, they were presenting exactly what was already in place that everybody was doing anyway. I mean, that's what they thought, but they were making it better and broader, and so you would have more, more, making it easier for us, for all of us. So I didn't want anybody to think, because I got so many calls and so many comments, I didn't want anybody to think that the planning department had done anything wrong, because they certainly didn't. They took exactly what they had and made it more lenient, so we would have more. So I just think that's important for everybody to know that. Nobody wasn't trying to hide anything or put something where it wasn't supposed to be. We've got the best planning department in South Carolina, and they're good.
Thank you, Ms. Henson.
If this goes before a committee, or could y'all appoint a committee to maybe come up with some of this? I know there's two separate sections of this county, and we live here, my family's there, it's in D. B. for Frederick Joyner reporting Lancaster County, I saw him out there.
This commission.
I know there's two separate parts. If this gets deferred, would it be proper to have a committee maybe to come together?
This commission will hear it again on March the sixteenth.
So that's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's move on. The next item is U D O text amendment two zero two one zero zero nine seven, manufactured housing.
To represent this, the amendment to U D O section two one five point three, you table?
Yes.
To allow manufactured housing in rural neighborhood districts. Basically, in the background of this, we've seen a few requests over the last few months to rezone away from the R N district in order to allow manufactured housing. Kind of looking at a way to reduce what it seemed to be unnecessary repetitive rezonings, as these were often being approved. So the proposal addresses two point five point three, to add the manufactured housing used to the R N district, which is currently allowed with the A R, R R, and H districts. All districts would be allowed as permitted with review. That's how it is in the three districts currently, to continue that way into the new R N district. Just a quick reference there, this is where we have R N presently in the county, so it would expand to all of these properties, about 500, 3,000 properties in the county right now that have rural neighborhood zoning. That number may be slightly in flux from those rezoning cases that we've, I don't know if that's been updated to reflect those handful of other properties, but you see, they go, there's a small little cluster way down in the southeast there. Most of it is up kind of, yes, as you move into the Panhandle area with some more central counties. Just to help, the amendment was found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as S E C title six, and staff is recommending approval of these text amendments.
Any questions for staff? Yes, to Mr. Levine.
Just one comment. Just one comment, and I don't know if you started sneaking this in recently or just started doing it on this time, but your map showing the locations of the existing zonings, extremely helpful.
These are new.
Yeah, very, very helpful. I didn't think I remembered seeing them before, but that is great, great visuals.
Yeah, I like them.
Thank you.
I can see more of them.
Anything else for staff? Great. At this time, we will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. No one has signed to speak to it, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have it for you, U D O text amendment two zero two one dash zero zero nine seven, manufactured housing. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve for Mr. Levine and a second for Mr. Barnett. Your nine, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Rosa Sandsberry.
For.
Amika Neely.
Against.
Charles D.
Against.
James Barnett.
For.
Matthew Jones.
For.
Sheila Henson.
For.
Ben Levine.
For.
Motion to approve is passed by a vote of five to- Motion to approve is passed by a vote of five to, five to two, excuse me. These will go forward to county council. We have the one we just heard along with the landfill, UDO text amendment, that will be going forward. I want to thank everybody who is here, everybody who has been here today, some have gone and wish that I could thank them also. Lightning evening. We have work to do, gun ordinance. And I'll make this statement now, I've made it before. This has not been, in my opinion, the ideal time to have any kind of gun ordinance come before any group with the attitude and the atmosphere that we've got floating around not only here but all over this country. So we will do the best we can do with it. We will discuss it fully in the workshop. We hope that everything comes to fruition at that time and we can move forward away from this as quickly as possible. The one thing that I should have mentioned earlier that I will mention now, one thing I would like to see in those documents is a clear explanation and definition of what a commercial shooting range would be and a nonprofit shooting range would be, because a nonprofit shooting range actually brings in money and could be considered commercial offsets. But I would like to see that if you don't have too much to do between now. But thank all of you for being here and thank every one of these commissioners. They do a super job. They're the best commission that this county has had in the last 12 years. I can vouch for that fact because I've been sitting up here somewhere for 12 years and I'll be here 12 more if they'll let me. I have no intentions of going anywhere. But anyway, anything further? I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion.
Do you have any new business to discuss?
No, a couple things, minor to add. One, two big items for next month's agenda, we, I think as I already mentioned, the gravel mine that is going to be on this agenda and obviously deferred. So next month, there's been two queens, my knowledge and that. And so that will obviously be a big topic of discussion. We also have the county's capital program that will also be on the agenda. And you may recall on the, that goes hand in hand with the potential impacting ordinance that will be there at some point. You know, good, good discussion tonight on the, just big picture, good discussion on the gun range amendment. Yeah, I think also we've thought about, and you talked about that considerably, in our own confines of how people get used on this. And I think in this mindset, just really kind of thinking about that a lot and trying to figure it out. And we think that if, because of the changes we had to make, because you had to expand into new districts, break out archery ranges, you had really, you didn't quit using scalpel when you ordered, you had new corporate hatches. And so if someone that may have seen the ordinance on a red, and it may have looked like a much bigger ordinance than it really was. Certainly, yeah, take point taken on the timing, you know, given the three, also it's really keep in mind when we're given an assignment, we have to run it and we don't get the choice to, yeah, we can't always pick and choose. So we're moving forward with that assignment, but we'll certainly come back next month with the same information, but also we'll try to clear it out, some of the definitions or just clarifications for your comments. Two, just, just minor things. One, we, we continued interviews for the administrative assistants on Monday. That's the people that we liked. We had to take a pause with the COVID issue. So, and then, two, just a few, you may see some of the, much more confident sitting in this chair, bringing these various screens and whatnot. So, the other is we did get proposals in on the UDO update for consultants. We've got actually six proposals, which we're really pleased with. You may recall the first, first round when we tried, we only got one proposal and we ended up having to let that consultant go just because they didn't have the capacity. So we're pleasantly surprised that we got six proposals to help us, you know, fix that issue. And, you know, quite frankly, and I'm, I'm just randomly thinking about this, it's probably maybe a bad idea, but, you know, because the, obviously we learned this evening and beforehand with shooting range is, it's obviously a controversial topic, it's a technical topic, it's, you know, different, it's treated differently in different parts of the county or with shooting active groups or, it may be something that we specifically want to have the consultants come up with to not only address the enforcement violation that, you know, kind of triggered our marching orders to fix it, to address that issue, but also look at, you know, how would we, how would we improve these standards and get a outside consultant to give us advice, maybe it's something they've worked on, to pass and draw from some other examples. So that's also some food for thought from a big picture standpoint. That might be the best route forward. So again, helps us to raise a thought, so we can talk more about that offline. Anyways, that's all I have. Thank you for, it was great to see you all board tonight. Great discussion and I hope you have a great evening.
Action George Jared.
I did it, he said.
All citizen comments about shooting rather than Sheila's cell phone.
Good. You all right?